Trustee Noble, will you please take attendance? All seven trustees are here, thank you. Item number two, closed session.
I move the Board of Education convene in closed session in accordance with MCL 15268, Section 8C for the purposes of collecting bargaining strategy.
Sir's second. Any discussion? All right, roll call, vote. Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Abel?
Yes.
Trustee Southward?
Yes.
Trustee Noble? Trustee Fallah? Trustee Baker? I'm also, yes, that motion passes 7-0. We are moving to closed session. When we come out of closed session, we will reconvene to item four of the Agenda General Discussion. Agenda item number three, we are reconvening after being in closed session. So now, moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, General Discussion. 4A is our Board Committee Reports. Superintendent West, could you please call on each of those?
Yes, I will. And before I do that, I just want to acknowledge, and I had an opportunity to talk to President Hill after these, I think they were model committee meetings, all three of them. The attention that they were all given by the members was impressive. We had robust discussions in all three of them, so they really were model committee meetings, and I look forward to the reports tonight. I think from an order standpoint, if we could start with curriculum and instruction, go to finance and operations, and then strategic planning, that would be the preferred order. So Tarek, if you would like to start?
No, I, oh, thank you. I know, I went in and...
So in the...
I see the one for June only.
In the calendar, do you see that count?
Yeah. Which is where I went, sorry, guys. You just have to switch your account, but... Yeah, but it's kept saying June, so I don't know if I'm... I know, I thought, one second, I'll go back in. No, no, I'll get there. I'll find my way. There it is, okay, sorry. So, yeah, the, we had our meeting on August 12th. I guess we'll start with the first thing, which is really the superintendent goal, which is the Student Growth Assessment Plan. I guess, should I read through this verbatim? Is that helpful?
Well, that is the next agenda item. I can tell you, each committee dealt with the goals that were tabled last month, and I think we got to a good spot with them, so an overview of it could be possible and expedite the next agenda item.
Yeah, I mean briefly, it was, it's obvious. We're talking about growth, and when it comes to student growth, that was one of the things we brought up in the committee, was, it's difficult sometimes to talk about, because what is growth? Growth for one student, we might be talking about, you know, mastering a skill that they didn't have, growth for another, maybe pushing themselves beyond a limit they already have, so it's tough. But that's what this goal is really about, is to define that, list all of the assessments that we're using, what we, you know, what are the measurable data points that we're looking at, and then provide updates and articulate those goals. So I won't verbatim go through it, since we'll be going through that again, but that is in there. The second thing is the cell phone policy. So this is something, maybe we can, I don't know if we're going to have the discussion in this, or if that's on another agenda item, I didn't look yet, I know we talked about adding it, but, so two things, number... Is it 4C? Okay, so I won't go too deep, just to say, we talked about it in the committee. So we do have, it's important to note, that there is currently a cell phone policy for the high school, and it's important that it's for the high school, because obviously there's not a one size fits all when it comes to technology. It's going to be different than middle school, and obviously even at the elementary level and high school is no different. But for 2526, it's spelled out very differently than it was for the prior school year, which was kind of a figure this out, how are we going to do it? This is way more concrete, it's pretty clear, when devices can be used, when they can't. It's, I don't think anybody would agree, like, this is perfect, nothing's going to happen, but it's a good starting place. We had a presentation which talked about the, all the reasons why this is in place, you know, the mental health situations behind it, it was very deep. I think that's linked in there too as well, for anybody that needs to go through this. This was at a previous board meeting, we brought it up, so it's not the first time it's been there. But another part of this, we'll probably wait until 4C, is, you know, how does this differ from potentially a board-level policy, and what would that look like? So I'll, we'll go to that conversation on 4C. Sorry. Next item, literacy grant. So that was a great thing, $470,000 awarded for 35M, really targeting phonics. Todd, I don't know if you have any specific thing to add on this, I mean, that's a huge win that we got.
This is K8?
This is a K5 grant, and we were successful in getting awarded for the 35M grant. It was more than what we expected, so the $470,000 is going to go a long way in our classrooms. We had a literacy team come together. I believe, as soon as we knew about the grant, I'm going to be off maybe a month or so. I think the grant was announced around winter, and then we put a literacy team together early spring, and they looked at this a couple times, including in June, to make a final decision. And then we have submitted that. Robert did a great job leading that group of teachers and elementary program consultants, so we had a recommendation in there, and all of our recommendations were approved by MDE. And so now we'll be working on what the implementation phase looks like, and purchasing as well. So it'll put a lot more resources in our classroom, so we're really happy for that. And it was very restricted grant, so we could only use it for specific items. And similar to the way the other grants have moved in the last few years, it was a similar process, but we were successful in grabbing that. And then there's a couple links there. If you're in the agenda, if you want to look at exactly what's going to be targeted from an instructional standpoint, you'd be able to review that as well. So at some point, we'll be coming back with the CNI Committee, talking about implementation, and then as well, what that looks like as the year progresses. Yeah.
So is the grant restricted K8, 5, or local?
K5.
K5.
All right, K5, based on your level of your standing, or your placement physically? So like, if I am functioning as a sixth grader at the fifth grade level, am I able to use these resources, or not, because I'm a middle schooler?
The grant was specific to expend the money in elementary grades K5. Now, once the materials are in, how we distribute those, I mean, they're, you know, if somebody shares a resource, you know, that is acceptable, but we wouldn't necessarily purchase it for sixth grade. And this particular curriculum set, if I'm remembering correctly, they are specifically geared towards elementary, but sometimes we might use supplemental, you know, maybe for special education, or other resource classrooms, we might share some of those resources. But this grant was specifically for elementary grades, kindergarten through fifth grade.
I didn't know that. Elementary or to make physical impact?
Yep.
And lastly, we've talked about topics for the rest of the year, so there's some required things we have to go through, obviously, as it comes to MITKIP and things like that, and then some other things that we'll be looking at, but pretty good smattering of topics, I would say, in LMS. So any questions, comments from that?
Nope.
Good.
Finance and Operations?
Okay, so we did discuss in detail the, but we just went through the in-closed-session tentative agreement.
Yeah, I hit the button.
I missed the button.
So we went through the tentative agreement, so we're very, very pleased at the work that's been done to reach a four-year agreement. This agreement gives us security for the key goals, offering competitive contracts, retraining and recruit, the best educated administrators in the state. We're excited, the agreement provides necessary compensation packages, reflect the strength of our district, and people will make it special, so Finance Committee is recommending that the full board vote on this when we go inside at a 7:30 meeting. Second thing, we talked about, we'll talk about in A, is the superintendent goals, so I think we're pointing that to another agenda item, so we talked about that. Long-term facilities planning, we also discussed the need to have a long-term facilities plan, so that's also one of the goals. One of the things we're going to be voting on tonight, food service purchases, the need for, the committee reviewed, one of the items is the current computer system within our food facilities is outdated, so one of the things on the agenda that we're going to talk about is voting on that, of course, it's necessary to keep the operations running effectively. And then finally, we talked about, which is again, is another agenda item, they're going to talk about a strategic plan. We went into the strategic plan, we actually focused from a finance committee, just looking at sort of the costs of the different proposals, but we'll talk about that when we go to the strategic plan committee's update. One of the things, again, just to reiterate, that we did spend time on, and that's going to be coming in November, we're going to spend a significant amount of our time throughout the year, looking at one of the goals, which one of the goals is getting to a balanced budget. So starting in our November meeting, after we kick off the school year, we're going to start looking at things that's going to be presented to us, ways that we can get from now until that '26, '27, get to a balanced budget. What are things that we can be looking at? And then leveraging our other committees as well, to make sure that we're all cohesive, and then bringing it to the full board to make, you know, to make, I guess, these necessary things that has the less impact on our students, to make sure we're getting to a balanced budget. Any questions?
So is the cost of this item is 36%?
Yes.
The food service, is the point of sale system where we would scan the meals, whether they're à la carte, whether they're paid, whether they're free or reduced, only time will tell on that, but for tracking purposes, it is necessary, that is also funded out of the food service fund, so that is not a general fund obligation. We have dedicated dollars for that.
Technology costs.
Any other questions? Want to move into strategic planning?
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, so I'll jump in, strategic planning. So we started off by talking about the two superintendent goals. Thank you Superintendent West for putting them forward, and Trustee Cullen for then kind of adding in the various different SMART elements. We recommend that they be accepted as written. We talked a little bit about the Oakland County Parks Partnership Update, and the community outreach associated with that, and kind of planning to talk to the community and various different groups and stakeholders, to see kind of what their interests, concerns, desires are for as we move forward with discussions, which, again, there's been no active movement on any agreements or decisions, but we're still in the decision-making process. We then spent, and have spent, a lot of time talking about Strategic Planning Service facilitators. Started off with 33 responses to the RFP that was put out, if you recall, several months ago. We started off with the discussion about strategic planning, engaged Galapagos to do an initial facilitation surveys, to then help us get to a mission, vision, why statement. That was then kind of moved into the RFP side, to go out for a more fulsome strategic planning service. Started off with 33 different responses. Thank you to Todd and his team for going through and doing Yeoman's job, narrowing 33 down to eight. Michelle and I then spent several hours, along with everyone else, on various different phone calls and Zoom calls with eight of the 33, to narrow it down further. We then narrowed it down to three different providers, Baker-Tilly, Fielding International, and Through Consulting. They came in for in-person interviews, and then after another fulsome discussion, we narrowed it down to Through Consulting, who had the best price point for the services they were providing, and made the recommendation as a committee, after a lot of discussion, to push to the rest of the, to the rest of the board, Through Consulting for that purpose. And that was a long discussion, but I think a very fruitful one. And we narrowed it down to three, based on price point, plus the various different elements of strategic planning they could provide to us. And then also with regard to, in conjunction with Through Consulting, given that we are going to be utilizing the resources, or hopefully utilizing the resources that Galapagos put together, including the data they collected, we talked about making sure that Through Consulting's scope of work incorporates taking the information they provided, and utilizing that, as opposed to reinventing the wheel. And I think there was a copy of the contract attached to the recommendation. I think the contract is missing the scope of work, which should be added in, and we need to make sure that the scope of work also includes the fact that they're going to be using Galapagos, and that might flip some of their scope a little bit. Any questions?
So would you ever feel your recommendation is that we utilize them?
Yes, if we're going to utilize a strategic planning facilitator, then they are the best option of all of them, at the price point and the services they provide.
And just for everyone's benefit, I mean, some may or may not have seen my emails to the group for discussion today. I feel personally that we shouldn't use a facilitator. I think we, this is something that we could leverage what's in our community right now, and do it internally. And I've outlined sort of my thought, I think we can take the knowledge that we got from the previous consultant that we used, they had a lot of data in there. That combination with leveraging, again, resources from our community to do the facilitation, gather the data, gather the feedback, send out the survey internally, get the data, and then put it together in terms of coming up with our strategic plan. I don't think spending, and I think the recommendation in terms of the contract would be close to, with travel expenses, $100,000. I think it's a significant lot of money, and I think we could cut that cost and do it much more, much more, I'm not going to say efficiently, but obviously inexpensively internally.
So Paul and I, and I always appreciate this about Paul, we had a robust conversation, and we have agreed to disagree on this, this measure. I believe that it is pertinent and necessary to have a facilitated, a facilitated process here. This board, I know this board, and as well as our administration, require collaboration. And in order to do that, and bring all stakeholders' voice into this process, it needs a skilled, facilitated, third-party provider. We were very thoughtful, because finance and operations did give us a heads-up on being conscientious about cost, and we were very conscientious in our selection process. We had, of the 33 bids, they spanned from $43,000 to $244,000. And we interviewed, in the eight companies we brought, we spanned that continuum of services, and you could see it was evident with the cost, what you would get for, for the services. I think that landing on Through, they provided, and I would agree with how Jason articulated it, for the cost point, they are providing the services we need. We also, and the, kudos to the committee, Michelle and Jason, and the others we assembled, were committed throughout the process to make sure we vetted these very clearly, and I was able to have very robust conversations with the references that Through has used. And Kentwood Schools and Grand Haven Schools have recently used them, and we were able to, I had a great conversation with both superintendents, and they raved about the partnership. It was really more about, than just facilitated services, it was about a partnership that was really gained. And what I believe is important here, in Bloomfield Hills, and if you recall, when we went through the process, I, when I interviewed, I said, "Let's do a strategic planning," and that was part of what I wanted to bring to the community. In order to do that, it's going to, it's going to require an investment. And Paul mentioned, it's about $100,000. I think this will drive our work and focus our work for the next three to five years, so if we spread that cost over five years, which we won't, it's, it's an eight-month engagement, eight to 12-month engagement, you know, we're investing $20,000 in a focused plan that gets all stakeholder input. And I think to rely on the capacity of volunteers, and we've had this conversation, to rely on the capacity of volunteers and our internal team would not yield as great of a product. So I'm steadfast in my belief that this is the right thing to do, and I appreciate the support of the committee and the recommendation moving forward, and I would recommend that the board, the board move forward with that.
The only thing I will add, again, just on history, and so I've been around a long time, we've used, for whether it's strategic planning, whether it's community participation, over the course of ten years, we've used many, many, many consultants. And in my experience is that, you know, yes, they have outlined a good process, but, you know, I feel for this, and that's kind of why I spent some time over the weekend, kind of, you know, taking data that we had, taking our why, mission, vision, even, you know, tagline, threw it into sort of, you know, AI, see what it'd pop out, and then kind of formulate a deck. It's really what they're going to end up doing, except facilitation. I think we can internally facilitate that, and get something in the neighborhood of what I threw together, and I think we can save $100,000 by doing that. But, and again, so that's just my experience, and just every time we've used consultants in the past, the added value that I've seen has not been that significant that we should spend this type of money.
So, as you know, I was kind of skeptical going into the process of engaging Galapagos, skeptical about how Galapagos then fit into the greater strategic planning, skeptical about consultants generally. I'm still skeptical about consultants generally, but looking at what Through puts together for other districts, and seeing what's on their website, I think we can do a lot of it ourselves. I like AI, I think we can take data and generate a okay strategic plan, utilizing the data. I've tried to do it myself, and I think Paul's, yours was better than mine. But looking at what Through puts together, a lot of what I see as valuable in bringing on the third party is, it's a little bit about the facilitation, but it's more about visioning. And I know we have great experts in the district and in the administration who can help us with visioning, but that would be visioning within our kind of echo chamber. And I think there's value to bringing in someone outside of our Bloomfield echo chamber to help us vision what does education look like in the next 10 years? And where should we be pushing? And what KPIs and metrics can we utilize, both from within the district and other districts? And I think we could do a great job with it, and I think we have great people in the community that could assist with it, and I'd be, if we go that route, I'd be happy to work with Paul and others to kind of lead that group, if we want to avoid the cost. But I think there is a value in bringing in a third party to help move us, and help kind of look outside the district, and not be inside our echo chamber, helping us make those determinations as to what does a really good strategic plan with really good KPIs and really good goals that flow from our vision and mission, what does that look like? So I think we can go both ways, and if our mandate is not to go outside and engage a third party to assist with this, I think we could do a good job. I think if we want to do a great job, we, it would be helpful to have a third party.
Is there some kind of happy meeting, like where there's a little bit more from internal, but getting that visioning? So I'm looking at their proposal, and it looks like half of it is kind of like, it's just like kickoff project, collect data, develop findings, set vision and goals, like we've already done all of that. So is that in there, $100,000 proposal?
That was my question as well, and that was kind of the challenge to Rick and team, to go back to them, because we have Galapagos, presumably we have a lot of good data, we, I think the instruction, the mandate was, do not recreate the wheel of what they did going forward. And so we had talked about at the end of the Strategic Planning Committee is to, sorry? Yeah, it's on.
Lindsay, Lindsay's was on.
My's on. I pushed it. No, it's red.
Yeah, we're both red.
Maybe I'm not supposed to.
What we had talked about was changing their scope of work to push it to the backend, because a lot of what Through does, you can see what they did for other districts, is they create kind of maps online on your website that track the KPIs, provide it to the community, develop it over time, kind of redo analyses, so that you make sure you're kind of going forward on a path. And so changing the scope of work to take what we've done and move that to the backend was what we discussed going back to Through with.
And I had that conversation with their CEO, and that's exactly what we would plan to do. They knew, or they know that we have a good data set from Galapagos, and when you talk about, and that's, that's one of the things I felt to mention, their reach, their national and global reach is the important part. So we may spend more time in the visioning piece, looking at innovation, facilitating those type of conversations, as opposed to month one, the kickoff and the engagement and stuff. So I would say that we're not looking to reduce the scope of their work, but shift their scope of work within the, within the confines of the dollar amount they provided. I would like to reinvest in the process in a different way.
So have we answered Lindsay's whole point? Like, is some of the work already done that we could...
I would say the collect and review data could be shortened, and we could reinvest that time and money into setting vision and design initiatives, is what I would do. So I would not be interested in going back to Through and saying, "Well, what can we get for $40,000?"
My question is there, if cost is a concern, you know, to Paul's point, that we can just focus on whatever the backend is, cut off the beginning part that we've already done?
I think it waters down the results. Is there a way? Yes. Do I think it provides the best product? No.
It does. I think there, this was good discussion, but we'll complete during the portion out in A, ABC. All right. So good conversation so far. Thank you to everyone who's been preparing on that topic, because I know it's been a lot of work. But we'll come back to that during the regular meeting. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 4B, our superintendent goals for 2526.
Yeah, as you all mentioned, you have a goal document that includes six goals. Just for the community's understanding, this is a process that's born out of the evaluation process that happened in June. There were identified areas that we could focus on, and we developed goals out of that, talked about it in July, and our back, we tabled that, essentially kicked those to the committees to look at, and are now find ourselves here. A sixth goal was added, and I thank Trustee Noble for bringing that forward, and the work also that Paul has done on all of these as well. We have taken the SMART framework and tried to design goals on that. So I don't know as if we want to belabor any of them, they were all talked about, just for global perspective and community knowledge. The goals focus around executive staff evaluation process, and detailing out how we're going to evaluate my executive staff. This is really getting accountability throughout the organization, and the board was interested in having that as a goal, as am I. We know we have a robust teacher evaluation process, and there was great discussion about how we cascade that throughout the organization, and make sure that all people are held accountable, and not only from an evaluation standpoint, we can talk about it as an accountability measure, but we also want to talk about continual improvement. That's the purpose of evaluation. So what does that look like? We will develop that process through, through this goal. District strategic plan, we talked about that, and having a strategic plan by June of 2026, and you just heard the discussion of the, this is the what? The board's saying what they want, and we're setting the goal. How we get there is part of the larger discussion, and that will continue on. The student growth assessment. and that will continue on. The student growth assessment, the curriculum and instruction handled this discussion, and I think we got to a very, a very good place with this. We're going to focus on what, what and why the assessments are given, and really dig into that before we look at the growth measures. So I'm excited about that work. Facilities Plan and Sinking Fund, we are, essentially, the goal is to have a comprehensive strategic, a comprehensive long-term facilities plan that we're continuing to work off. And should the community support the sinking fund in November, it will give us the tool to really manage that effectively and efficiently. Balanced budget, we had a lot of discussions about 2627, the board, and I commend you for this work. Being fiscal stewards is part, certainly part of the governance framework, and having a specific goal about having a balanced budget and doing that work methodically and meticulously throughout the year is going to be important. And our administration is preparing for that work as well. And then belonging, we identified it as part of our identity, our DNA for the school district, and we have set a specific goal for, for that. Now, what I will tell you is, there was a framework of that goal, and Paul did provide edited recommendations. Those are both in that document, and I think the conversation here is, you know, which one. Those first five goals were all endorsed by the respective committees. The sixth goal would be somewhat new to the, the committee as a whole, and it was not discussed in any specific committee. But it did have some work, and my understanding is trustee Cullen and Noble had a discussion about these edits too, and I, I don't know what that conversation yielded, but that's where the conversation should go here, is whether or not that sixth goal is pertinent, and as a board, how we think about these six in aggregate. They are recommended for approval at the board meeting tonight, so.
I have just two. So the one from the academic. So the student growth is, so we're not, we're not adding to the goal, we're just, the goal is just the measurable, just measurable, not what student growth will be. You're taking that back, and what is, what's the plan with that? With student, with actually having a student growth goal?
The assessment's being new, and like that, there's not, we don't know necessarily what the correct amount of growth would be, or anything like that. So developing that, looking at that, trying to figure out what the appropriate metrics are to use, and what the growth should look like, would be then, the plan would be for the next year, then to have something that has maybe specific targets in mind.
What about the belonging goal? Are we looking for the specifications of designing the tool? Are we just talking about a survey? I'm just wanting to see like what this means?
Just kind of on the two. So I think the initial one was, which was great, is a goal. And what me and trustee Noble spoke about was trying to make, lack of a better word, you know, it's smarter, so more measurable. So getting this, the survey, but then how you're going to measure whether or not we're successful on that. And that's the, you know, and I don't know if that's in there. That was sort of, and again, I, I sent that, I think on Sunday. So it's sort of like a draft of what that would look like, not just the survey itself, but measuring success for that. I mean, it's Carolyn's goal, so I'll let her comment.
My thought was that, you know, culture is very important in public schools, and since that's our tagline now, why not measure it and see how we're doing, and maybe change the way we're doing things, depending on the feedback we get. But to trustee Cullen's point, we need more robust ways to measure that. You're really good at, at measuring and looking at that framework. So I think trustee Cullen's goal seems very specific and achievable and smart. So we should, I, I mean, I would recommend adopting his changes, but I think it will help, you know, the younger students to consider, well, I think yours was five through 12 grade?
Yeah, five through 12. I mean, if we wanted to tweak that and make it, you know, just make it more general, you know, just kind of tweak the wording a little bit, make it more general, so it's not just five through 12 students, we could just say students.
And it is less academic. I know we're all here for academic achievement, but I think it's a good thing to keep the superintendent's pulse on what's happening with the culture and belonging in general, and the team.
I guess my question is less about the need of the question, or the goal, it's more of the direction of the, of the, of the actual question, or the goal, should I say? It's, it's, I guess we can maybe work on, like, what you're actually measuring here?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's.
Is it the classroom experience?
Well, surveys, it's, it's everything that falls within belonging. So a survey, and we've done this in the past, we've sent out belonging surveys, so getting that feedback, and then measuring, you know, it's obviously coming up with what those questions are, measuring it, and then evaluating how we're doing as a district. And then what can we be doing differently based on the feedback we have, and seeing if that's working.
Yeah. I just, I just love for us to look at maybe firming up what the, what the target is. I definitely think it's a necessity, but I think we should look at maybe firming up where the, where the target may lie.
Well, I think the goal, it would be the administration to come up with those questions, and then report back to the board what their ideas are around that.
And what I'm saying basically is the goal isn't clear to me. So that's what I'm specifying.
Okay.
The goal is not clearly stated as to what the target is. I guess the overall arching mission is to understand belonging, but that's a very broad topic. But I just want us to be mindful that this goal is very, it's, it's not specific to what you're looking to achieve. I think it's a great option. I love for us to maybe rework this a little bit, so Rick and his team know where their target lies with the development of their questions for the survey. Just want to toss that back to us.
It says the goal, the sense of belonging is the goal of the survey?
I, I don't.
What did you say? Like, is it the collection of the data, or is it a certain targeted point?
The goal is to determine the criteria.
Yeah, to assess that, and then report back, and then we'll have a baseline, and then we can, the next year. You can address, if there's students who don't feel connected. Because one of the things we talked about, trustee Cullen and I, is having an open-ended question, saying what should we improve to make it a more collectively connected spot, a space here?
So maybe a reasonable goal would be to develop, to frame it similar to like the assessment goal around professional evaluation, say, to develop a assessment tool for belonging, culture, and climate survey for the district by January 2026, with implementation by March of 2026, in order to evaluate, and then, and then Noble's side goal to be able to do it from here, is like, we could reword that slightly to, to be able to get a little bit more like concrete, but really what it sounds like is we're using a culture and climate survey to measure belonging in the district.
Correct.
And we just need to maybe fine tune that a tiny bit to create, to make it look a little bit more like.
Goal number one, I think it is. But no.
We've done that in the past, right?
Yeah, similar.
So the concept is, yes, create it, whatever the survey is, but the real, for lack of a better word, the real smartness of it is, once you send, I mean, anyone, right?
Yeah.
Creating the survey is not a goal, that's a check the box. It's getting the data back, and then how we're evaluating the data. And then what are we doing to react to that data?
And is there anything we can do to leverage what we've done in the past, to then say like, oh, we already kind of have a baseline of what belonging looks like?
The answer should be yes to that, yeah.
And thank you, Paul and Carolyn, and everyone, especially Paul, for putting together the SMART goals, measurable analyses for each one of these. I think that's, it's really useful to see that. My main question is, for superintendent West, these are your goals that we're putting to you. They should be stretch goals, but they should be achievable. Are you comfortable that all the goals that we're talking about and voting on are ones that you feel comfortable being able to achieve?
I am. Contractually, we have to come up with, with goals together. And I think this has been a very collaborative process, and I'm very comfortable with talking to my team. Transparently, we haven't talked about the belonging goal as much. We'll, we'll debrief that at our cabinet meeting. But with the other five, I think we're very, I think they're very achievable. I think they align with the work that we were doing and need to do, and I'm excited about that being the focus for this year. So thank you, I appreciate that question.
Any further conversation on the goals?
So they are going to be, we're going to ask to adopt them. I don't know what we want to do with.
Number six, do we want to adopt five, and then we will adopt at a later board meeting, six, once it gets tweaked, then goes back to the, goes back to Strategic Planning, the committee that it sits with, and then we could adopt it in September.
That's a good idea.
Just watch the video back, right down here.
She's certainly documented it.
All right. So that's a good plan for number six. In terms of 4C on the agenda, the cell phone policy discussion, is there any trustee that thinks it will be, be a good idea to move that to Agenda Item 11G, or make a motion to do that?
Make a motion to move item 4C to 11G, so we could go inside to the 7:30 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion passes 7-0 to move that agenda item. We will take a short, we will take a five-minute recess, and then reconvene for the rest of the meeting. So we will come out of our recess and reconvene. Let's please retake attendance, trustee Noble.
The one is present?
All seven board members are present. Thank you. Moving on to 7B, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the states of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item 6A, the administrative appointment of Alicia Washington Hutton, Associate Principal of Bloomfield Hills High School. This will be presented by Joe Duda, our Assistant Principal, Superintendent of Human Resources.
I should have a motion. I move the Board of Education appoint Alicia Washington Hutton as Associate Principal of Bloomfield Hills High School with effective date of August 26, 2025, as presented.
Second?
My second.
All right, we will, our discussion, we'll be hearing what you have to say, and then we will have our discussion and then our vote. Okay.
Good evening, superintendent West, and members of the board. After a comprehensive interview process, including multiple rounds and feedback from students, staff, and parents, pleased to recommend Ms. Alicia Washington Hutton as Associate Principal at Bloomfield Hills High School. Ms. Washington Hutton earned her bachelor's degree in secondary education from the University of Cincinnati, and is on track to complete her master's degree in educational leadership at Oakland University this fall. She holds certification in secondary social studies education, along with a graduate certificate in bilingual education from Wayne State University. Before joining BHS, Ms. Washington Hutton taught middle and high school social studies, and served in the IB Middle Years Program Coordinator in Royal Oak Schools. With your approval, she will begin her duties in about 12 hours.
Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion passes 7-0, and welcome.
Is Washington, come on up.
Hi, on behalf of like, or not on behalf, I'm, I'm on my behalf. I would just like to thank the board, my admin team at Bloomfield Hills High School, all the parents and students who sat through my interview process. I'm so excited to join this esteemed community of educators, and I can't wait to get to work. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we take a picture?
Quickly.
We have to work that.
We can do that, I don't know where.
We can go, that's not nice, it's here now.
We're very salty.
Very salty.
I consider you all.
We don't want to go anywhere.
Wait, just fell.
I consider you all.
You can't go back there, otherwise he'll be in the.
I wouldn't want the board in my family. I wouldn't want my, I wouldn't want myself in my family.
Thank you.
Just me.
Exactly.
Me and my family.
With these, with these yoyos.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item 7A, which is public comment. To submit public comment during a meeting of the Bloomfield Hills School's Board of Education, please complete a comment card presented to the administrative professional recording minutes prior to the agenda item. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education. It is not time for dialogue. In the interest of time, the Open Meetings Act provides that boards may place limits on the time allotment for an individual comment. In addition to making a public comment, you may also email the board at any time at board@bloomfield.org. Any comment that contains profanity, threats, defamatory remarks, or is directed at any person not employed by the district or member of the Board of Education in their official capacity, and related to the role and responsibilities for which they are employed or serve, or is otherwise exempt from First Amendment protection, will be excluded from public comment. Requests for public comment are assigned a number. This evening, we have a small amount, we're not going on the number system, we'll just call the names. When your name is called, please come to the podium, identify yourself. If you are speaking on behalf of a group or organization, please also identify who you represent. Thank you for taking the time to address the Board of Education. Public comment is limited to three minutes. We do strictly adhere to that to make it fair to all, and trustee Fala will keep track of time. Our first public comment is from Bryn Stevenson.
Good evening. My name is Bryn Stevenson. I'm the president of Bloomfield Hills Robotics, the nonprofit. I wanted to sincerely thank the board for your continued support of the robotics program, and for investing in the future of our students through the new robotics center at the former Lone Pine location, which is now under renovation. We are especially grateful to superintendent Rick West and his incredible team, who we've had the privilege of meeting with for planning and project management. Their professionalism and attention to detail and dedication to our students has been outstanding. We are thrilled to be working alongside such competent and caring partners, but most of all, we're excited for our students. This new robotics center will be a space where curiosity, creativity, and collaboration can thrive. We know the students are going to love it, and we can't wait to see the impact it will have on their learning and growth. Thank you again for your vision and commitment to the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Next up is Andrew Peterson.
Hi, good evening. Andrew Peterson, I attended the board meeting on the 28th of July, where we had several concerned citizens regarding Bowers Farm. After I left that, thank you very much, Mr. Abel, for recommending that we have an open forum on it. I've received an email where I think Mr. West will go over some discussion points. Something that Mr. West said in the last meeting stuck out to me, though, that I think is owed to the clarification to the taxpayers and concerned citizens, concerned school kids as well, that there were two vacancies at the farm that were consciously not backfilled. I would just like to understand why that is, and if that was something that was to drive the direction of basically coordination with Oakland County Parks, or if there was a hiring freeze, if there was an uncertainty on if we'd be able to backfill the positions themselves. But I think that's something that's owed to the public, because that's something that from a professional setting really sticks out to me, is why were they not backfilled? So that's just what I wanted to voice is, concerning question is, we So, that's just what I wanted to voice is, concern question is, we head towards the open forum over Bowers Farm. It's something I'd like an answer on.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Next is Patricia Watson.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Watson. I have worked at Bowers School Farm for the past three years, under Brooke Larm as a farm guide, and with the former agricultural production coordinator, Kate Debs, in fruit and vegetable production. Since Kate's departure, I've been leading that work, taking on those responsibilities without the title, because I care deeply about the farm and the students we serve, but the leadership position remains vacant. I am a Michigan State agricultural student, and I specialize in fruit and vegetable production, and I have nearly a decade of agricultural experience. I chose to work at Bowers because I eat, sleep, and live agriculture. How unique is a farm that not only engages in production, but is controlled by a school district in which education about agriculture is its ethos? I love my job, but lately, the atmosphere at the farm is unwell. Things are tense, confusing, and unsecure. We are consistently told that nothing has changed, but things have changed. It is not status quo. Leadership roles and attitudes have changed, some without logical justification. The farm is unorganized and disconnected, yet we are expected to operate as if nothing has changed. Superintendent Rick West explained that conversations with Oakland County Parks has opened up to potentially include involvement of control of education, and while we understand that these conversations are preliminary, we are deeply concerned. As our leader Brooke Larm says, "Follow the research." Our district has something unique, a living agricultural hub delivering researched-backed, place-based learning. To take that away or reduce it would be a disservice to the community. The same is said for fruit and vegetable production. This space is actively growing and deeply intertwined with education at Bowers. Guests and partners have emotionally and financially invested in it, yet support from the district has been disappointing. Now, it feels like our work is not valued. Districts like Detroit Public are currently and personally producing over 30,000 pounds of food for their students and expanding. They don't have a farm. They use the 10 cents a meal program to be reimbursed, covering costs and improving student outcomes. BHS is in the 10 cents a meal program, but we are not taking advantage of this cost-saving initiative. Imagine what BHS could accomplish if we approached our production spaces with that kind of innovation, fully under district control. I am happy to meet with the board and speak to you all to explore better utilization of the 10 cents a meal program through Bowers Vegetable Production. We are at a crossroads with Bowers. We can hand over part of what makes this district exceptional and unique, or we can protect and grow it. Please keep both education and crop production in the hands of Bloomfield Hills Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. That concludes, do we have any other public comment cards that we've received? All right, that concludes the public comments section of our agenda this evening. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, Superintendent West's report.
Yeah, good evening. A lot to report today as we prepare for the coming school year that which we're very excited about. IA has already started, and we did have team members out to IA earlier this week. The seniors began their day with the senior sunrise, a wonderful tradition that symbolizes both the start of their final year and the bright future ahead for them. I had an opportunity last week to welcome back our transportation team, and they had, as they had a professional development. What a dynamic group of individuals, often the first people that see our kids, and they just bring a great energy and culture to the district. And where it's important to note, and this is probably the first time we've been able to note this since any of you have been on the board, is that we are fully staffed at, in our transportation. So, I am excited to report that, and it is worthy of also noting, Geneva, our leader over there, is such a dynamic leader, and she's doing great things with culture over there as well, and they're just a great bunch of people. So, if you see them at the bus stop, make sure you say hello, make sure you introduce yourself, and let them know how much they matter. New teacher orientation, we did welcome, what was it, Joe, 16 people or so? 21, Sarah, thank you. 21 new individuals to our team last week, and they were given a two-day professional development and immersion into the district. Sarah toured them around on a bus, and just a dynamic opportunity for them to, again, immerse themselves. They spent the second day, I welcomed them with a short message, and then, they were able to learn about our HR and kind of the practicality of working with our administrative team. So, thank you to those who organized that, that two-day event, and we are energized to have new faces in new places. So, Welcome Back is tomorrow. Our summer has officially ended for our staff. Students, please engage in the last week and enjoy your time, but we are excited to welcome staff back tomorrow morning. Our Welcome Back Day will kick off with celebrations, our, some student performances, and then, I will kind of set the tone for the year with a message of kind of the work plan. Strategic planning, we have been in a robust process. As the community may remember, we were able to get student, student, staff, and parent feedback at the end of last year, and we defined and the board adopted our mission, vision, why statement, and taglines at our last meeting. Very excited to roll that out as part of our Welcome Back Day tomorrow. We are in the process, and you'll hear discussion tonight about our strategic planning process and what that might look like moving forward. Upcoming events, this week's full of opportunities for our families and students. Meet the Teacher Nights at our elementary schools will take place, I believe, on Thursday. All four of them are on Thursday. An open house for Model Academy is this week as well, and a variety of events across our schools that are helping families and students feel connected and energized for the year ahead. I will tell you, our athletics programs are in full gear right now, and they're competing. Please look at our athletic website for dates and times of those events. We've also started preparing for our fall events, where I'll be out and about welcoming community members in. Cookies and Conversations will be on September 10 at 4:45. Wellness Center Ribbon Cutting is September 12 at the high school, and Sinking Fund Information Meeting Night is on September 25 at the high school as well. Remind me where Cookies and Conversation is? It's at the high school. Everything's at the high school. So, looking forward to that and engaging and connecting with our community once again. Tuesday, Tuesday, September 2nd is the official first day of school. So, again, students, please engage in your last week of summer and look forward to welcoming you all back on September 2nd. And I am, I am really pumped up and energized for the 25, 26 school year. As I mentioned, we'll be giving that Welcome Back Day speech tomorrow. Lot of exciting things going on. None may be more important than transitioning into this next update, which is the sinking fund, and some prepared remarks about that. I want to provide a quick update on the district's sinking fund proposal. This is actually the message that went out, so I don't need to read this verbatim, but this is the message that went out to the community, and we are asking, and the board has put, approved, a one and a half mil sinking fund for 10 years to be put on the November 4 ballot. We will be going forth with a robust informational campaign, if you will, where we're going to be providing a lot of information. There's going to be documents available at each of the buildings with signs and such. Again, to remind the community, this is an investment in technology, safety and security, infrastructure, and transportation. So, very excited about what that potential is, should the community support this initiative in November. So, we will, a lot of information, there are two, there are two or three informational nights planned. One will be virtual to accommodate, to accommodate those that can't make it into the in-person ones. And then, there's a website, there's a website that you can go to, link to our homepage, and that will give you a lot of information as well as the FAQ. So, excited to bring that forth, and I'll be talking to all the PTOs and staff about that initiative as well as we work through the fall. So, that is my update, President Hill.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 9, Board President Report. Just want to point out that Agenda Items this evening, 11B and 11C, are regarding ratification of two critical contracts, as we've discussed previously. And I just want to thank Superintendent West and his staff for doing what the board appoints them to do, which is to negotiate those contracts on our behalf. And we're very appreciative to the efforts for everyone involved on both sides of these contracts. I don't want to get ahead of myself, because we technically have not voted on them yet, but I just want to say that the point that we got to today was based on very diligent and hard work and reasonable people meeting at the table, and to be able to start this school year on this note. As a board, it makes us very happy and proud and gives us confidence that we have great people in charge of making really big and good decisions for our district. So, thank you for all your efforts to everyone that was involved in those discussions. And then, on that note, I just want to say, as a board, we're proud of where we're standing right now as a district. Superintendent West just successfully completed his first year as superintendent. Now that he has gotten his first year out of the way, we're on track of where we need to be. We have these critical contracts that are settled prior to the school year beginning. We're in the thick of a robust strategic planning effort. All of these are very positive things that will make for an excellent learning environment for our students this year, full of, you know, stability and good plans, and it feels good to see where we're at right now. I want to thank the committee members on the board for all the work they did in August. Everything they achieved, as Superintendent West said during the study session, a portion of our meeting. We had great committee meetings. We really are hitting our stride, I think, as a board, working well together and communicating well together, and I'm appreciative of everyone's effort. And then, of course, to echo Superintendent West's sentiments, we are excited that you will all welcome the staff back tomorrow, which is an exciting day. And then, the students, some are excited about that, some are not, but nonetheless, we are all excited to have them back next week. And that's it for my report. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, Consent Agenda. Trustee Noble.
I move the Board of Education to approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion passes seven zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, Board Business. 11A, Request to Approve the Purchase of Food Services Devices, Superintendent West.
I move the Board of Education to approve the purchasing of food service devices in the amount of 36, 546, to be paid from the food service fund as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion passes seven zero. Moving on to 11B, Request to Ratify Contract, Bloomfield Hills Education Association. This will be presented by our sister, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Joe Duda. How about we have a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve the contract with Bloomfield Hills Education Association as presented.
All right, discussion. I'll note that the board did discuss this item in closed session at the beginning of this meeting.
I think we, we all agree, and we discussed this in earlier, that we're very happy and proud to be, to have this four-year contract for our educators, to get them to where they need to be. They're the heart and soul of our district, so this is a very, very happy time for our district to secure them for the next four years.
And to hopefully attract and retain future talent that are yet to come. I think we've set the bar high. That was good to hear, so I'm very, very happy for this, for all of our teachers now and hopefully in the future.
All right. Any, any further discussion? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion passes seven zero. Congratulations.
Thank you. If I, if I might, just for a moment, I just want to recognize a few folks based on what you just said there, negotiation, collective bargaining requires cooperation, trust, and in some cases, some creativity. I want to recognize the BHEA team led by Phil Deliberty, BHEA President, and Scott Warrow, MEA Executive Director, for their hard work. I also want to recognize my predecessor, Keith McDonald, who did most of the heavy lifting on this collective bargaining agreement and deserves recognition. I also want to thank Stacy Wigton, Candace Moynihan, certainly, and Sarah Fairman for their contributions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. You can stay put for C. Request to Ratify Contract with Bloomfield Hills Schools Administrative Council. Is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve the contract with the Bloomfield Hills Schools Administrative Council as presented.
Is there a second? Trustee Southward?
I mean, you go through the vote.
You want to go, you want to, okay. Is there any discussion on this item? Similar sentiments to the previous? Appreciate the efforts of everyone involved and where we're at today. Anything further?
I just would like to say thank you to Andy Geniak, Randy English, and Lynn Gibson, who all were part of the Ed Council negotiating team. And we're very, very happy to have a comprehensive agreement that recognizes the hard work and dedication of our building and district administrators.
Thank you. Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
All right. Roll call vote. Trustee Abel?
Yes.
Trustee Colan?
Yes.
Trustee Noble?
Yes.
Trustee Fallah?
Yes.
Trustee Southward?
I abstain due to conflict of interest.
Trustee Baker?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. The motion passes six zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to D, Request to Approve the Contract with Through Consulting. This is a continuation, well, let's see if there's a motion. Is there a motion?
Chair of the Strategic Planning Committee, I will move the Board of Education to award a contract not to exceed $110,000 to Through Consulting LLC for facilitation of strategic planning services, not as presented in the contract, but rather with the proposal from Through, modified as we discussed in our breakout session, to push back some of the work that Galapagos did originally and instead, add to the backend of the process for the, I can't remember what Superintendent West said, for execution of the strategic plan.
I think we need to, we need to redraft the motion probably then, right?
Probably. Because the contract attached to the, the document is not a fulsome contract. It's missing an element. So, we could say, I move the Board of Education to award a contract not to exceed $110,000 to Through Consulting LLC for facilitation of strategic planning services. Period.
I mean, you're the chair of the committee. If you feel confident and comfortable in that, that's fine. I don't know if anybody else has any opinion. I just don't, I don't know what we're doing precisely in between now and...
So, then, we have to second it, and then, we have a discussion to identify the terms.
Okay, so we can read.
In the feeling to modify, you can always go back and modify at the discussion too, so.
Okay.
Is there a second to that modified motion?
Second.
Second. All right. Discussion.
So, I'll start. This process began several months ago when we originally talked about engaging Galapagos to assist us and facilitate coming up with a mission, vision, and why statement. I was skeptical of the process, skeptical of breaking it into two separate sections, having Galapagos do one thing and then, having another entity do another. I'm always skeptical of using consultants and paying consultants money for things that we may be able to do ourselves. That being said, I think we have a good mission, vision, and why statement, and I'm hopeful that we have good data that we obtained through Galapagos with both their surveys, to our community, to our students, to our staff, and with regard to the various different focus groups that they put together, kind of gathering data. I'm told it's in an Excel spreadsheet that we can utilize and leverage in conjunction with Through. We met with, well, originally, when we went out for an RFP, there were 33 RFP responses. We met with, well, originally, when we went out for an RFP, there were 33 RFP responses. Our administrators, Todd Bidlack, Superintendent West, called that down to eight we met with. We then called that down to three to come back for in-person meetings, and then identified Through Consulting as the strategic planning facilitator that had the best price point for the services they were providing. I am still skeptical about using a consultant and paying any amount of money to them, but that being said, strategic planning is probably one of the most important things we do as a Board, and so having someone to assist in this process to enable both facilitation of communication with our community, but also to help us with visioning and looking outside the Bloomfield Echo Chamber to come up with a strategic plan that kind of is forward-looking over the next 10 years, I think is very important. I think if we had sufficient community engagement, we could potentially do this ourselves and do a good job with the strategic plan. I know Trustee Colan put together, utilizing AI, a strategic plan that I thought was excellent. I tried to do it myself, and mine wasn't as good as his, but looking at what Through puts together for other districts, they have very impressive strategic plans that are tied out to forward-looking visioning goals attached to KPIs that are then reported on websites, so you can track how you perform vis-à-vis your goals over time, and that's frankly, one of the reasons why I thought they were the best provider of all the providers that we talked to. We also talked to a number of other ones, some of which were twice as expensive and put together twice as potentially beautiful strategic plans, but for this price point, I thought they did an excellent job. I think I'd be happy to work with our community if we wanted to do this ourselves and with our administration to put it together, but I think there is value going outside our district to look at kind of the greater vision outside of what we know and what we see as Bloomfield, to figure out, okay, what is the nation, what is everyone looking at in terms of what goals should be, what vision should be for a lighthouse district? So, that's why I thought Through was the best, but a lot of that was looking through the mandate of this is what we need. We need to get a facilitator to come in.
I'll go. So, Chris, we went through this in the study session, and my thought pattern being, again, on the Board for 10 years, using consultants for the last 10 years, I feel, and that's why I spent some time this weekend drafting, you know, with data that we had, using AI, drafting a strategic plan, to kind of show that we can do this on our own. We have a significant amount of talent, you know, in this district in terms of, you know, internal, and then we have talent, you know, outside in terms of community members. I think spending, you know, up to $110,000, we can utilize those funds, that can pay for, we just signed off a new contract that can get us two new teachers, can get us social workers, can get us, you know, additional nurses. I think that's a better use of funds to spend, and I believe that we can do this internally. So, I feel that in terms of using them to do this, I feel we could do it internally and take that up to $110,000 and use that money in other areas of need throughout the district.
Thank you both. This kind of echoes what we discussed in the study session. My opinion is, I appreciate the work, Michelle and Jason, that you did to assist Superintendent West and his staff to vet this process, and who were, and it sounds like we had great choices to pick from, so I'm grateful for that. I trust, based on what you conveyed earlier about this specific consultant and why you think that they would be best for this service. And Paul, I understand, serving 10 years on the Board, you would start to get consultant fatigue, and that's understandable, but not all consultants are bad and not all consultants are good, which is why we rely on our human counterparts to decide if we think who's best in this situation. I trust the recommendation and what I heard about why you think that this would be a good use of resources. So, I'm not ready to outsource something like this to AI. I think that this is going to require, very importantly, when Superintendent West was first talking about this, the key term is third party. We have to have an objective third party outside of the district. While it is great to involve in our community, we are doing that throughout the process. We are seeking the input of our staff throughout the process. I do think that if we have, I think that $110,000 spread out over five years of what this will guide is well worth it, because to your point, Trustee Colan, the other resources that could be used in the short term, yes, there are resources this could be used for in the short term, but in the long term of what this is going to drive about where we place our resources, the budget over five years, not saying that it's going to control the budget, but it's going to control the whole picture. So, I think it's well worth the fee, and I intend to support it. I don't know if anyone else has any other comments.
I was just going to say that I usually am not the one who likes to spend dollars, and in this instance, I think I might have voted for to spend an exorbitant amount of money on this particular process, and I think it's because of what you just said, President Hill, that this is going to be really important for us to engage in a process that's going to impact our district and kind of drive our direction for the future forward. Yes, we do have a great mission that we've established, you know, through consulting. I think the gaps that an outside viewpoint may bring into the conversation that we may not have at the table or may not, we may not see some of the things that the outside consultant may be able to acknowledge and recognize. So, I think it's, at least to me, it's important for us to engage in an outside resource for this particular adventure, because it's important for our district to get this right, as opposed to, I mean, I want to say outsource an AI, because it's, it can be amazing.
I'm not afraid of offending the robots.
They're listening.
Part of their process is going to be throwing data through AI.
No, I'm just saying, they're always listening.
I'm sure that they'll use it in a responsible way.
Yeah, but I was just saying, I think this could, you know, impact our district in a different kind of way. So, I'm looking forward to engaging with the organization, if possible, if that's what the need, the desire of the Board, so.
So, I'm not opposed, you know, to a consultant. I think, you know, that does bring value, having that outside viewpoint brought in, but I am, like, looking at their proposal, right, for $110,000, it included what seemed like a large portion of what we've already done, so I don't fully understand what they're going to do when they're repurposing that portion to something else. You know, what does that look like? You know, do we have the details behind that? That's kind of my concern.
I, so, I think my biggest concern with this, about doing it internally, is not that we couldn't, but it's who would bear the burden of the responsibility of doing it? It's a lot of work. I mean, just getting meetings set up and getting everybody in a room and collecting data, I don't really want to put that on anybody's shoulders that already has considerable amount of work doing whatever they do today to support our students and our staff and our facilities and all of that, so I think a chunk of that money was also coming here. So, we're saying 110, but I think it was like 70, something, 80, I don't know, and then 17,000 or 20,000 was roughly for onsite visits. So, we're getting somebody here, which is important. We're not calling in over the phone and having somebody walk us through things, which I really want. I want somebody here to get to the facility, to look at, you know, our, who we are, to understand today, this is who we are, and then talk about what this conversation really is, which is what's going to be in our DNA, which I've asked that question for a couple of years now, is what is Bloomfield Hills' DNA? And I think that's what we're trying to answer, and for something like that, I think the investment is worth it. Do I think it's, sounds like a lot of money? I do, just shooting off, you know, from the cuff, like, it sounds like a lot of money, but I don't know what the right amount of money is. Is it 50, is it 40? So, given that we really have to start doing this now, we really can't wait, in my opinion. I'm not prepared to put the burden, in my opinion, on other people in the district that already have a lot of stuff going on, or we're going to be engaged anyway, so I don't want us taking on, like, duplicative work with a full-time job. I think it's worth it. As far as Trustee Baker's concerned, which I think is fair, I would hope that any of the time that we would have spent doing things which are already there either are just omitted and we pay less because it's up to not to exceed that amount, so we don't hit that number, or if we think there's benefit in looking at things that are very specific to Bloomfield Hills, which are not currently in scope, such as competing with private institutions, which is a huge concern of mine in this area. We have 20, whatever it is, 20% of students that could go to Bloomfield that don't. That's something unique to us. I think that's worth putting that underneath the magnifying glass and saying, "You guys are doing the strategic plan. Let's hone in on this, because this is something that we bear the burden of that most districts don't." I think that would be worth the value in having that, so either it's a not-to-exceed amount, we don't hit it, or we use, as Superintendent West said in our closed session or our study session, we reinvest that money in other areas. So, I'm in supportive of it, but I do see your point of trying to be conscientious about the funds.
I just don't know if you've already told them these $110,000 pot here, like, they're going to find a way to spend it.
It's hard not to use it. I agree. I get it. But I mean, we do, we, that is on us, maybe not us, no, well, it is. We're going to approve the money, but to make sure that we're getting what we pay for, and we do that with other things, so this is no different.
They're going to spend $110,000. They're going to spend...
You're a consultant, Paul, you know.
And I know. Like, it forces them to come back with another, you know, proposal of what that looks like.
That is, the concern is, the current proposal does not reflect the work that was already done by Galapagos, that when we started this process, the mandate was we were going to leverage that and not duplicate. So, I think one way to do this is to approve the process for awarding the contract and then let, I guess, the negotiation happen as to what that looks like, and then take it back to the Strategic Planning Committee and say yea or nay, or we can take it back to the full Board. I'd rather have a process that moves it forward, so we can try to get to a final answer without taking too much time.
I think the proposal included a illustrative work plan, which included data collection and review, and we're fixated on that right now, which I can understand and appreciate. This is a holistic partnership over eight months, in which we're going to get facilitation, we're going to get workshops, we're going to get data review, we're going to get visioning, we're going to get, you know, design initiatives, and we're going to get work on the backend. I think that's digging into the weeds a little bit. I understand the, and appreciate the concern, but the proposal was for $85,000 to help us lead, and they gave an illustrative example of what that looks like. They know that we have a data collection. That's not going to negate their responsibility to analyze and receive data. They're going to want their own fresh perspectives, and we're going to have new people in the room, too. So, I think the cost covers their scope, and I think there's going to be flexibility within that, because having talked to them and their references, there's flexibility in their process, and they tailor it to the district, and that's what I really was impressed by both of their references, is it was very, very tailor-made, and there was no nickel and diming after the fact. They do have a price point in there per hour, if anything exceeds, but we will continue to engage with them in a partnership fashion for that amount. So, however you want to end up, or wherever this conversation goes, I do think it's worthy of noting that their timeframe and their work, their scope doesn't change. Where we use the time may, given the flexibility and the data we already have.
Well, I guess since I'm the last person to speak, I'll speak my opinion. I really appreciate what Galapagos did. They seemed like a neutral party when they did the vision, mission, and why statement and the tagline, and their professionalism was probably nothing we could get internally, because that's what they do, that's what they're expected to do versus, I mean, these are all professionals, yes, but they don't do, you know, mission, vision, and why and tagline statements on a daily basis, so having someone who, you know, came in to do that was really appreciated. And, but, you know, I'm a little bit apprehensive because of the price, I'll be honest with you, because, you know, we're going through these cost-cutting measures, like not rehiring people at Bauer School Farm, you know, this is one person's salary. So, yes, I feel a little apprehensive about the costs, and so that's where I'm feeling right now, a little bit skeptical.
Two people's salary, depending on the level.
Oh, yeah. Well, we didn't rehire the director. I don't know what level that person was at, but I'm just saying that it is a huge cost, and I'm not really sure that I'm really comfortable supporting it right now.
Yeah, to the cost discussion, I agree, and I envision it as a one-year cost to ensure that we are laser-focused for the next five years on Tarek's comment about our DNA, who we are, which to me, then focuses and streamlines our staffing efforts and ensures that we're continuing to attract and retain the best talent, and it makes us a more attractive place, not just a dollar amount, but a clear vision of who we are. I think it's an investment in five years that, yes, it technically could go elsewhere for this one current year, but I think it's a good longer-term investment to get us aligned on who we are.
I have a kind of statement and a question. So, from the statement side, I'm, as an attorney, I only like contracts that have defined scopes. So, I would, given that the attachment drives the entire contract, I'd like to see a little bit more specificity as to what exactly we're getting, because I get that there is a price per hour over, but I'd like to know we're not duplicating the work, because that was our, kind of, our mandate going into this process, and I think we can do that through Superintendent West, who I think understands what our driving desire is, to just negotiate a final contract. It shouldn't be that tricky. From a question side, kind of, because again, $110,000 is a lot, the difference between the $50,000 strategic planning partners and $110,000 in terms of services was substantial. We get a lot more, like, there's several who provided proposals at the $50,000 range. It's almost night and day when you get to 110, and then it's a whole another universe when you get to, like, Fielding International at $240,000, who are incredible, but just outside price point. But, yeah, my question is, if we were to say, "Let's do this in-house," and this is a question to Superintendent West, "Do we have the ability, both in terms of timing, resources, and kind of objectivity to do that?"
No.
What's eight months of salary of eight people? I mean, that's real conversation. Rick has all his entire team repaying...
Oh, we're paying more than that, yeah. That, I mean, that's, we're going to pay more money on the time pulled away from the tasks already at hand in the district, as opposed to the $100,000 one-time cost, you know, and then the eight-month, and then after that, you have to actually put it into action. So, it's so much, there's so much time to task that's going to be associated with this, that we're going to be asking our team members to pull away from their current responsibilities within the district, to know to dedicate this time and who's going to be doing that work. So, I'm just thinking about this, at least now, because Megan said something made me think about this. It's going to be really important for us to think about, we're spending money on this, but what about the resources that we're now asking for our extra taxing on our current district employees? I'm just putting that out there.
Again, I think we can do it. We have a lot of amazing talent, internal and within our community. I think we can do it. You know, to go back to another, it's different, but superintendent search, right? Global search, last two superintendent searches, global, this, that, comparing. So, I'm just, I'm just saying, we spent, you know, X amount of dollars on each search, we found someone from West Bloomfield and someone from Troy.
We...
I think it was a good search.
Okay, all right.
I don't know. I really liked it.
I'm not saying it didn't end up with a great product, I'm just saying it was presented to us as this global...
Paul, I would counter that just because we can doesn't mean we should. I believe we are more than capable. Doesn't mean we should. I think there should be, absolutely be an objective party involved, and we should not overtax our resources. So, I think it's not a question of can we. I think we have excellent talent, but I don't think the people that are immersed in it should be the source of the advice.
And my final point, and I'll leave it at that...
And my final point, and I'll leave it at that, is being fiscally responsible to our community. I think this is not being fiscally responsible to spend $110,000 on this. And especially, what I'm hearing is that it appears they're going to be, they have work that's already been done, and they're basically handed a portion of what we're paying them $110,000 to do.
And we discussed a resolution to that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I think the point of this, okay, either we do this and we pay the money, or people are going to be very disappointed in what comes out of this. I mean, that's just the reality. There's no way this significant amount of work gets done in-house. I don't see it. I just don't see it based on what I've done with strategic planning at organizations. I know what goes into it. I know that it, just from a project management perspective, just look at that, somebody to organize meetings, to hold people accountable, to take notes, and I know we can use AI for portions of this, got it, but we still need to have somebody overseeing it. That's to put, not even to talk about anything else that happens. It is, it is a portion of money, but as a taxpayer, as somebody who wants to be here, who wants my kids to go, you know, have their kids go here one day, like, this is what it takes to get there. I'm not interested in pinching pennies on this. I will look at pinching pennies on other things where it makes sense, we can compare and contrast, which the committee did do that. I mean, they did go through and say, why not this one? Why this one? I mean, there was that work done. So I would say we have been fiscally responsible. We have done our due diligence. We haven't just said, let's go with the cheapest or the best. There was some level of, how many vendors? Thirty-three? Interviewing that many vendors to go through. So I think that needs to be articulated well, that it wasn't just, we've got our eyes shut and we're handing money over. I mean, these are people that are doing jobs on top of jobs and people that are volunteering to do work. So I get your point, it's a lot of money. I just, I don't see it being successful without it, so.
Paul, sports are starting back up soon. Your time's going to be more limited, too.
All I'm saying is, I certainly hope at $110,000, what I put together, our final product, is a lot better than this.
Fair enough.
That I put together in a weekend.
Fair enough.
I mean, for what it's worth, universities do use internal personnel for their strategic plans, because they are educated professionals, and they can, you know, work together and, you know, wordsmith things and work together. And there is opportunity to create that, but it is, takes work and time, and you have to reuse your time resource. And that's one of the challenges, is if that's internal, you know, the superintendent's going to have to make those decisions, you know, whose time can be allocated, and that's a difficult discussion to have, I think.
It's opportunity cost, right? I mean, they have other things, if we pull them away to do this, then they can't do whatever, something else. Everybody's got limited time. But my concern's still more around, like, the nebulous nature of what exactly they're going to be doing. Would like something more concrete, because presumably the RFP said we had the mission, vision statement all done, so I don't know why they put in the scope that they're going to do a vision statement.
The RFP called for a scope of work to include planning, information gathering, and analysis, which still needs to be done.
Yeah.
Because there's different questions to be asked. Goals and outcome development, implementation, and documentation and communication.
Yeah.
So that's, and the contract reference back to that RFP, there is negotiations to be had with the proposal to determine what the final scope can be, and I can understand and accept that. But I'm confident with those discussions that we will get a partner that serves us for the eight-to-ten-month engagement.
Look, I'd be happy to volunteer to put in whatever time is necessary if we wanted to do this in-house, but from my skeptical kind of brain, I know doing that, it would not be objective. I would come at the process with a defined scope of where I want it to end up, because that's what I do in life. So the value of having the third party, even though it costs a lot of money, it's, as we said, two first-year teachers, the value is avoiding that outcome where we have people coming in from the administration, from the board, from the community, who are going to define what the outcome is, which is a little bit dangerous when you're trying to vision a strategic plan that lasts 10 years and multiple boards. So I would volunteer my time, as many hours as it takes. I think Paul already volunteers a ton of time. I know we have a lot of other board members who do it the same, but I think it's a risk of doing it in-house, leaving aside the administrative burden.
I decline.
You're not, not volunteering.
I don't, I mean, I'm just being very honest. I respect the time that I do have on the committee, and I decline if that's an offer.
Yeah.
I wasn't volunteering you. I apologize.
I'm just making sure.
Yes.
Jason, where did we end on your comment about the scope?
So I think if we just end with my motion, which is period, it gives us the opportunity to basically say, look, this is the direction we're giving to the superintendent. Like, take a look at the proposal, make sure that we're not duplicating the work that Galapagos already did, because we don't want to spend, we don't want to take $30,000 or however much we spent for Galapagos and pay someone to do it again. On that note, I think even if we give them what Galapagos put together, they're going to have to do data analysis on that. So there's going to be a little bit of a overlap, which was always my fear, but I think if our instruction to Superintendent West is, take the strategic plan, take the proposal, and make sure at the end of the day they're not duplicating any of the work and negotiate the scope from that standpoint, I'm comfortable with it, even though it is expensive.
I just think if we prove it like that, $110,000 will definitely get spent.
Yes, absolutely.
Right? So could it be less than that if there's some discussion of scope and figure out what exactly you want, you know, what we need, what we want, versus, you know?
That would be the question. So I think we have two options. One is to basically go back to them and say, 110 is too much, take out, you're going to be taking or getting whatever Galapagos put together, take a look at it, tell us what the cost savings are associated with that, and reduce your $110,000 scope. That's one option. The other option would be, as we were discussing, to basically say, okay, you're avoiding this cost, what can you give us to, say, for example, provide us strategic analysis with regard to our private school competitors, or other kind of strategic value for implementation of the strategic plan, like they do for other school districts on their websites and...
I would just feel more comfortable having something more concrete than, you know, just like you're describing to approve versus.
The recommendation is a contract not to exceed 110. The proposal was for $85,000. There's costs of travel, that's why we're putting not to exceed. We don't know how, they have a proposed plan of when they'll come and engage in that $2,500 per trip, plus there's some additional costs if we want additional services that they offer. Again, the scope is identified in the RFP. The scope, the proposal did not ask them to break it down by event. So, you know, that's why we were very intentional with how we drafted, and I would recommend it as it's written with a period after planning services.
One thing I would, I mean, wherever the board goes, I mean, I think you know how I feel and how I'm voting, but I think you mentioned it, I would, in the contract, make sure you have a deliverable. I wouldn't start getting into this hourly rate if somehow they can't. I would make sure, again, I'm against it entirely, but I would just say I'd make sure that you have the deliverable as part of it, so it's not like they're starting, going to their hourly rate, so I don't know if it's in there as well, but.
There's clarity with what the deliverable is, which is a comprehensive strategic plan.
Within that's, within the scope that they're providing.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Are we comfortable with the wording of the motion as it was amended to be able to vote? Okay. We're going to do a roll call vote, and I'm going to go in reverse alphabetical order.
However you want to do it.
Reverse alphabetical order.
I had a feeling this would be coming, so I wrote all the names and said, okay, alphabetical order would be, all right. So trustee Southward.
I'm a yes.
Trustee Noble.
I'm a nay.
Trustee Colon.
Nay.
Trustee Fallah.
Yes.
Trustee Baker.
I'm a nay.
Trustee Abel.
So I'm a tiebreaker?
No.
Oh, sorry. I'm a yea.
I'm a yes. Motion passes four, three. Okay, thank you for that good discussion on that item.
Next time, go in.
Yes, ma'am. I will keep track of the order in which I, Rebecca, for a while, would be bringing me random numbers to pull. We might have to have those just on hand and ready, you never know.
I'll do ours first.
All right, moving on to agenda item E, request to adopt resolution in support of protecting the school aid fund and passing a timely K-12.
Can I make a point? Is there a reason why your goals are not on here?
We tabled them, and we did not want to be presumptuous with the discussion at the...
Oh, at the board, oh, that's why it's not on the...
At the general discussion, so if the board is so inclined, we would add a goals, but...
We can talk about that when we get through G. Moving on to E, request to adopt resolution in support of protecting the school aid fund and passing a timely K-12 budget. Superintendent West, is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education to adopt the resolution in support of protecting the school aid fund and passing a timely K-12 budget as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion passes seven, zero. Moving on to F, request to approve First Amendment to Superintendent Employment Agreement. Is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve the First Amendment to the Superintendent Employment Agreement as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I do have a discussion point.
All right.
Superintendent West has been with us for a year, correct?
Correct.
And he's done an excellent job, and I've been very happy, and so has the whole board. But to add additional time to his contract might be a little bit early in the fact that we just started doing goals now, and we haven't seen those goals object, I mean, we did do a superintendent evaluation, correct? But we haven't done really official goals yet or seen those goals achieved. So my comment is just, maybe we could table this till next summer, because a three-year superintendent contract is very common. A four-year contract is not as common after one year.
Well, it was a part of his original contract. Sorry, go ahead, Targ.
No, go ahead. Keep going.
It was a part of his original contract that we could amend it. I need to look at the exact wording, that we would have the right, so that's really not, we're not really awarding a four-year contract, it's sort of, if the board elects to, keeping it at a three-year contract, if we were to do it year over year. So.
So the articles that I've read recently, not necessarily in conjunction with this, but generally indicate that there is a correlation between student and school performance and longevity of the superintendent, which I think is critical. And if the contract allows Superintendent West to leave, so this, my understanding, it's two ways. We lock him into a role as well as he has longevity in the position. So from my perspective, given that, and not knowing whether or not it's common to do three or four years, I think there's value, given the performance to date that we've recognized and the last measurables, to extending. So that'd be my opinion on it.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I would say it's not common in this climate to have superintendents lately that are sticking around longer than they used to. So what we can do to make sure this is an environment where we have that kind of capability, I think is good for us and good for Superintendent West, and I think I view it as someone who, if we go back to when he had his, I don't know if it was the first or second round interviews, but, you know, commentary on wanting to be here for a long time, that stuck out to me. I think this is reflective of that. So I view it as the sense of him committing to a longer-term arrangement, which I like that. It's different than what you would find for most superintendents in today's world, in this kind of climate that we're in, so.
Agreed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right, motion passes seven, zero. Moving on to G, which was added on from our study session, this is a cell phone discussion, so there's no motion that needs to be made for this. This was just a discussion item that we carried over from the study session, and this was, Superintendent West, do you want to give an introduction about why we're going to be discussing?
I can make a motion.
We don't need to.
Well, I could, and people can decide if we're going to vote on it, so I'd like to make a motion. I make a motion that...
Well, no, no, Paul. We moved...
You have to let her make a motion, and it has to fail on the table. He has asked for a motion, so unfortunately, he has the right to present a motion.
I hate to say that, but he does.
We amended the agenda to be for...
I know.
Any point? Okay.
Yeah. So you can make an emotion to amend the agenda?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to amend the agenda to add that we, as a board, support a board district policy on cell phone use.
Is there a second? I'm not hearing a second. All right.
Fair enough.
Moving on to, so I don't know, I'm out of order now, if that was technically took the place of G, but now what was originally G, which was a discussion, which was a carryover from the study session, which was a discussion on cell phones.
So it's technically an item under G.
Yes, ma'am. All right. This is an item under G.
Yes.
So Superintendent West, do you want to give an introduction about why we're discussing this tonight, or, and it's a casual conversation, we're not voting on anything officially?
Yeah, I think this came up naturally. It's a big topic right now in society of whether or not school districts have some sort of obligation in the cellphone arena and minimizing the impact of cellphone use. So many school districts have taken up this, and trustee Colon provided a sample, a sample resolution that the board may consider at some point as it relates to this topic. I can tell you that the high school did a considerable amount of work last year as it relates to healthy electronic use, and they did draft their own policy, if you will, as it relates to practices that they plan to administer this year in the high school. Additionally, in the elementary and in the middle schools, we have policies that do not allow cellphone use in the classrooms, or in school really, at all. So we are, if you're looking at our practice and our policy, K-8, pre-K-8, where we don't allow cell phones. So I think it is worthy of discussion to understand this board's orientation to the discussion and where we may, where we may take it. I will tell you again, I've seen many news articles, and there's a lot of discussions on boards taking this up, and whether or not there's any benefit to having a governance policy to support what it is we're doing in our buildings.
So my comment, and that's why I made the motion, but we can continue to have discussion, is regardless of what happens, K through eight, and especially at the high school, I think as a board, we should support the new administrative policy and have an overarching governance policy regarding cellphone use that both administrators and educators in our district can point to. I think it's important. I think I was part of those discussions, Superintendent West, that happened at the high school. I think the unanimous decision was that this would benefit our students, and so that's why I drafted sort of a high level to be tweaked, looked at, in terms of what a policy can look like overarching. And I feel as a board that we should look at it, and again, put in whatever stipulations we need to it, but there should be an overarching policy that the district, our educators and administrators can point to, that we're in supportive of what they're doing. That's the reason for it.
So, and you and I chatted on this. Huh? Oh, sorry, trustee Colon and I. The policy developed at the high school is very specific. It talks about what does this deal with, where devices can be, where can they not be, what are the consequences for misusing it, misusing the technology, some other notes, and then in addition, resources regarding healthy tech toolkit, family conversations, family tech planner, family health, personal technology pledges. In my opinion, it's robust enough at the high school level that if we were to try to go off and put something at the board level duplicative of that, then what happens if we want to make a change? The changes should be done at the high school level. If we decide... If we decide the second offense is actually whatever, that change is more easily taken care of at the policy level for where that sits. If it's something we need to adjust, that's a lot more work for it to come back to the board. And to be honest, there's been a lot of people who've put way too much time into this for us to try to untangle it. Now, that being said, do we want to have something at our level that talks to us supporting and advocating for, you know, appropriate use of technology and maybe that kind of, you know, thought process? Yeah, but I don't, I'm not in support of having a duplicative of cellphone policy at the board level.
I agree with you. I'm saying we have an overarching that is more vague, not the specifics, that supports, like, you know, changes are going to happen at the building levels, but they could point to an overarching that we agree, and then we can come up with something a little bit more vague, that it's not coming to us for changes, but we do support it. By us creating a policy as a governance board, we support what's going on in the district that they can point to.
So saying that I have this, we have this policy at the high school because it is in compliance with the overall...
Correct.
Whatever you just said, governance of the board.
Correct.
So that's what I'm hearing you say.
Yes, that's what you're hearing me say.
So not necessarily this context, because it's, this is very specific, but something that's a little bit more broad in nature, but allows for the buildings to...
Point to, yep.
Okay, I get what you're saying.
So would it be something along the lines of each school, the district shall implement a policy that reflects the overall goal of student mental health through the recognition that overutilization of cell phones is detrimental to their health?
Correct. Doesn't have to be my, again, we could make it, yes.
I get what you're saying. What you're saying now, that makes a little, at least to me, makes more sense. I think that that is a good avenue to follow.
I think digital wellness and safety, something like that is probably, because, you know, we're talking about cell phones, but the reality is, what we're really, it's not, it's not just this, it's what comes with it, social media, the mental health aspects of it. So I think, you know, we were saying cellphone policy, what we're really saying is, we want to promote, you know, digital wellness, safety, something along those lines of what we believe is, you know, so that, to your point, somebody can point and say, the district believes that this is important, we have these, you know, policies in the building that reflect that, that's why they're being enforced. So, and you and I kind of talked, I think we can draft something that, that's a little bit more generic, but I just didn't want to have, you know, us getting caught into having like a cellphone policy here and a cellphone policy here, so.
It's a classic case of the board says what, and Superintendent West and his staff say how. They've spent a lot of time, if it was, if I had not had a meaningful conversation with Superintendent West and about the new policy that's been drafted and the work that went behind it, I would come tonight and I would make a motion, and I would say, let's make a motion to ban cell phones in all of our schools. They have to leave them at the front door, and I would support that because I, as a parent, I would like to see them gone altogether. But I understand it's much more complex than cell phones. It's the fact that we have a bring-your-own-device-to-school policy, what students can access there. So it's a much broader problem than a physical cellphone in hand. So the reason I'm not trying to go too heavy-handed and push that and hope I get three more to support me is because I'm trying to respect the process that has a lot of smart people who work in the schools every day and understand this inside and out, and I think would also like to take the strongest approach possible to eliminate this problem in our schools. They've come up with another plan. So I'm in support of continuing with the plan that is going to be rolled out this year and ask for a commitment from board members and the staff to be in a constant state of evaluation of if it's working or not, constantly speaking to this. Don't just say, we have this new policy and let's hope it works. I think we need to continuously revisit it, find out ways to figure out if it's actually working, and eagerly be waiting to modify it as need be in order to make sure this goes away. I mean, every parent I talk to in this district, if they find out that I'm on the board, the first thing they say is, can you please get rid of cell phones? And I support that, and it's hard for me, as a board member sitting in this position, to not take the most aggressive stance possible on it, because that's what I would like to see happen. So I think it's semantics right now. I mean, I don't know that we need to come up with the goal tonight, but I agree with you, Paul. We should have a policy that, at a board level, that then the procedures that follow, follow that. I just don't know the order in which we should do it. But I'm trying to be respectful of the process that's already been put in place and what people have done to date, and that they want to roll out this year and try.
Yeah, I don't think, and, yeah, we're not going to do it tonight, but we can come up with some overarching, and I'm happy to work with Tarek on it, overarching policy that's vague enough that can point to whatever the buildings are doing, that they can bounce it back to the policy of the district, of the board.
Yeah, I have yours, I've got some as well, so I think we can combine and kind of come up with something that we could submit to the full board and just get, you know, maybe bring to the next study session, hopefully, and have some discussion there on it.
Sounds good.
Great, Tarek, thank you. Thank you, Tarek.
Anything further?
I would ask that we consider...
The goals.
One through five. One through five goals being adopted tonight.
Sure.
So adding 12, or 11 each.
Yep.
Yes.
And...
Need a motion?
Yep, need a motion. So I'll do it. I make a motion that we, as a board, adopt superintendent goals one through five as presented, and we will continue to work on goal number six as presented earlier this evening.
Seconded.
Is there a second?
Second.
He did second? Got it, thank you. Policies on what? Any discussion?
Is number six going to go back to one of the committees, or...
Yeah, I think we decided it was going to go back to a committee and...
Strategic planning committee?
For September.
Is that strategic planning?
Is that, well, it has to be a committee Carolyn's on, and it's not a finance one, so.
No, I am on yours.
Well, I'm saying, but I don't know if it's not belonging.
It wouldn't be...
Doesn't matter to me.
Well, it works. It can go to strategic planning, we'll get it out to the full board for review and questions.
Any further discussion?
I think I did that to us.
No?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion passes seven, zero. All right, any, anything else that anyone would like to add before we adjourn? And we are adjourned, thank you.